What did you say?
Repeat.
Opening the Board of Selectmen's meeting for November 13th, 2023 at 6:02 PM. Just be happy to pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Our number WR24-10.
The move.
Second home favor.
Aye.
The only question I had on the minutes, I don't know if it needs to be said, but is when it came to cleaning and organizing the second floor.
Uh huh.
It was agreed that I had permission to move forward on that.
Oh, I can update those in my property. What date was that, the second?
Yeah.
Yep, I can update that. You're good. I'll add it before posted.
Motion to approve October 2nd, 2023 minutes.
Two.
Favor.
Aye.
Executive session minutes of October 2nd, 2023.
Seven.
Favor.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes, executive session, August 21st, 2023.
Seven.
Second, aye. Public session, anybody here need any comments or anything?
I do. Well, as you know, a little disturbed by some comments I made at the last meeting. There's been someone saying that it was lies, the fire chief or the fire department was lying. The person thought he had today, but I kind of want that address and I want to know what it's about. I wasn't here last meeting. And if there are further issues with that, I want it to be a public session in front of everybody so they can get facts. Because everything that I've heard is a hundred percent not true. So I've got responsibility to two groups in town, one to make sure everyone in my firefighting school is safe every day. And the second is to the citizens, both for their tax money and for their safety. And what he's saying undermines everything. I've spent three and a half years building up what past chiefs have done to this place. We've got a great group now, we've got a great group of people, we're getting back where we should be. And little things like this undermine that public's trust and I'm not, I'm not going for that. So I kind of want that addressed.
We have requested additional information from the complainant. So at the next meeting, that's when this will happen.
Okay, I want it public.
It's up to you.
Yeah, public, I don't need executive, I have everything. Everything you said was a complete lie, he doesn't, does not know what he's looking at, does not know what he's saying. So I want it openly open.
Now you're up.
All right, good. On the good side of things, I just want to fit the board, a couple of things going on this last month. We've done six wildfire trainings in the city of Worcester with their burn building with all the surrounding towns. Also, I brought guys to Logan Airport to do flammable liquid fires. So we've done a lot of, a lot of training, the airport was nice enough to, I have a connection there, so they were nice enough to get us in there to, us and the surrounding towns to do flammable liquid fires, because we do go to Worcester Airport for fires, we're in their run code outfit mutually. So that's why they wanted to train us on that. Tonight, we're doing a chemical suicide class because we've had some issues in, well, in town, I guess. And I want the responders, it's open to police also, I want them to be safe, if they come across, want to know what to do. So I have the state hazmat team teaching a class tonight for that. So we've been kind of very busy on the training docket. We've had a ton of public events, as you've probably seen, we did, hosted the Halloween, I don't know what you call it, we did the truck a treat.
It's a mash.
It was a massive, which was hugely pretended amazing. This weekend, we had the vets breakfast, that was just held again, that was a secret that's did that, but it was held at the fire station. So it's been, it's been busy, we have a busy fall coming up. A couple of things, we've got the new truck is ready to go. We're having an issue when that's kind of, I need some guidance from the board on, they're pressing me for at least a commitment to payment because they've got a line of people that want that truck. And it's been a couple of months since town meeting and I just need, the bar keeps, the goal line keeps moving for the check, so I kind of need a date. If you guys can give me a date during the week after you figure out or when we can, I can tell them to at least kind of get the pressure off.
We have a meeting Monday, right? At four o'clock?
We have a meeting, yeah, Monday. So based on Wendy's last update, the money isn't until the 30th. It should be received according to her email. That's, you know, according to that everything runs smoothly and there are no hiccups and setback. Lori, when I talked to her last week, seemed a little hesitant and given a date of saying December 1st, because if something went off, then Tim would have to go back to the vendor and say, oh, actually, no, it's going to get delayed. So I'm not really sure between Wendy, you know, making sure the funds are transferred and then doing a special warrant, because it probably will fall on and off to try to get that check ASAP.
No, she, I just asked and she said it was going to be all set Wednesday. But, and then I said, well, how long will it be funded? She goes, well, I don't, so I don't know what that means, all set Wednesday. I don't know what that means. I don't know, she just said to me.
Fifteenth?
She said to me, everything will be all set by Wednesday.
Excepted the bids, but I don't know.
And then we were going to meet on Monday to sign something.
Yes, the paperwork on the 20th. I'm not really sure.
What, I just need, I need to give them some facts, because they're sitting on a lot of money in the lot and they have a lot of people lined up with actual checks in hand that could.
Yeah, I'm, I think we should try to schedule a meeting off in an off week, if possible, so that we're not holding anything up.
Yeah.
Should we ask Wendy for sure, maybe like what for a bond? Yeah, just because she can speak better to it.
Well, she grabs one, the last thing we have is the ambulance there. I'm still working on getting that into turn to a brush truck. The vendor that was going to do it for free is still get that off, but they have to wait till a trailer truck is coming to this part of the country of, which hasn't lined up with anything. So in the meantime, I'm working with some other towns, like Auburn is one that I'm working with right now. They are actually interested in to just trade us a complete brush truck that's done. Because they've got money, they, they've run four ambulances and two of theirs are service for good. And they, their new ones are two years out, where they can get another pickup truck. So they might buy a brand new brush truck and then take our, so I'm working on a bunch of avenues to do a no cost item for the town to get us a backup brush truck. But I'll keep it close to this at all.
Okay.
That's changing daily, I'm just trying to do no cost for the town.
Wendy.
Hi.
Could you just give us an update on the bonding with the fire truck?
Also, we're selling the bond on Wednesday, so I'll be here all day on Wednesday for that. And I'll be able to tell you what the interest rate and the cost is going to be for that. And then we will have the money on the 29th. There's a bunch of steps like I have to do, I have to upload all the bond stuff to the state and that kind of stuff. And that's the quickest, I asked them to do it as quickly as possible, but like each step has a day or two in between, so.
Right, right.
Yep. So that's on a Wednesday.
We would be safe compelling the company on the 29th.
Is there a warrant right before that?
Within.
So 27th, yep.
Yeah.
So we'll put it on that.
Even if we had to do an extra meeting, we would do it. You're all set.
Because you can do the, and on the 20th, you're going to sign the warrants.
Yes, I'll put it especially. So just listed on the, have it on the warrant for the 27th and then the check can get mailed out or handed once the funds are in on the 29th. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Tim?
No, that's, that's kind of it for the update.
Yeah, other than, I appreciate that the chief is willing and is asking for open transparency with the alleged concerns. Trust will be satisfied.
About three is what the payroll records tonight, so he can see what, what he's been signing the last three days. I'll bring them next week.
Okay.
So, I'm going to go through my training, that's, no questions?
I got nothing else.
Thank you.
Control, I'll break up the updates.
So the board saw the latest applicant, so there was that one. And as you know, the two that were at the last meeting, on the 17th, there is the interviews for the accountant, which today, last Thursday, I sent a second email to the person that didn't respond and today I got a response saying he removes his application. But if anything changes and you want him for a firm, he's more than happy to be considered. I know. So therefore, there's only one app interview at 1:00 PM.
PM, we count it.
Yes.
We try to schedule the two town clerk applicants, the two O-Cam ones, for that same day. There were three, do we?
We have three total, but two from town.
And my three o'clock appointment was canceled, so I'm free during my lunch break on Friday.
So what's the first one, what's the earliest one?
Anytime afternoon.
So 12, 12:30, and there's one, so that would have to be then one after the one o'clock. Yeah, work into 12:31, 1:30, yeah, yeah.
Do we want to operate Zoom auction if they're not able to come in person since it's only a few days notice? We could use this.
And I have disclosed to all the app, anyone who's interviewing, that it would be recorded and. And just a reminder that Lori will be again present. She will be doing, you know, meeting with departments prior to, which will be nice.
In the morning.
In the morning, yeah.
Do we have any questions from the last interview? Or any last go around, any records from that?
There is somewhere.
Oh, that.
Oh, they said a long ago, yeah.
I'm like, yeah, I have no idea.
Sergeant Madrosian. Police officer appointments.
Good evening, Sergeant Madrosian, O-Cam PD, obviously, stepping in for the chief for the evening. We have three candidates for appointment. Hector Martinez Rivera, Fernando Maltevam.
Evan Gaylord.
Evan Gaylord, sorry. If you could just stand up. Is there files?
Tell us about yourself and why you might come to O-Cam.
My name is Hector Martinez Rivera, grew up in Pittsburgh, Mass. Very diverse town, has like every single facet of living. So O-Cam really reminds me of the side of Pittsburgh where I grew up at. Also, I went to school at Lancaster, which is very similar in the sense of how O-Cam is as well. Been policing for about six years. Got my master's in business administration at Pittsburgh State. Did like insurance sales for a little bit and decided to come back into policing. And obviously with post happening, it makes it a lot difficult for smaller towns to get that part-time help.
Right.
And I'm in a position where I'm able to help out with that, as well as fulfill the requirements over at Worcester State as well.
My name is Freya Madavam, I grew up in Waring, Massachusetts. I went to Worcester State University for my criminal justice degree, graduated in '21. Just went to graduate the academy back in March, been on the job over at Worcester State for roughly seven months. You know, I love being a police officer. Always want to be part of my community and make a difference. You know, I, I've been doing the college route for a long time, for a little while now, and I want to get the municipality side of, you know, policing and helping the community and being in the town. Get that experience and build my foundation as a police officer.
Evan Gaylord, I grew up in Charlton, Mass, now I live in Sturbridge. I've been in law enforcement since 2019 and I've been full-time at Clark University Police since 2021. I do have some experience in town here, working at Pine Acres. So I'm just looking to get back to the community that I got so much experience in there. I like the small town community, just like I grew up in in Charlton. Just want to continue to serve that here.
Any experience on chasing cows or moose or pigs?
Believe it or not, we had a moose at Clark, of all places.
I'm not going to chase moose.
They only go to school off the road.
People chase cows and horses and stuff, maybe llamas, but you want to chase moose.
All of you are post-certified?
Yes, sir.
No? Packs are all completed, you have the background stuff.
I got it. I am, so is chief, taking forehand. Yes, I too am recommending.
To appoint the three least candidates as part-time officers contingent upon one successful background check. Medical exam conducted by a reliant medical contractor. Past psychological exam issued by us. You have a company to use.
We do.
Is it a ability test, which I think you've already, you've done the PATs already, right?
Yes, sir.
Must be post-certified, you are successful completion of one-year probation.
Yes, sir. A second?
All favor.
Aye.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Welcome to O-Cam.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think we're a lot of incidents.
Congratulations, welcome. Welcome.
It's going to be.
Welcome.
Need to be the sort of health.
You make out.
Thank you.
And then see Wendy for Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
Next up is the Forest Hill subdivision, landscaping.
I spoke to the residents up there.
Oh, okay.
Planning them if we get off the end of the road and all, like, snow is going to be all over the place, and they didn't stand it. It's going to knock us off, it's going to find, but it won't hold up its snow, so. They understand that, that could be not the way it looks right now, so. They're fine when it.
Okay.
Right back. There is.
You could just give me one and I can make it.
So, we'll do what the best we can not to get into it, but.
Yeah.
You know, it's way more efficient higher than we're on, so.
Right.
Going to happen, who else is, who else is?
But are they more lined up or are they done with just the two?
No, they're done.
Okay.
They're done.
But I do think it's important that people understand that when there's the town right of way, you don't, you've got to be mindful that you can't just build something in that right of way. And there's, we're not liable if somebody's little trinket gets damaged or it's within the right of way.
It's also town property.
Yeah. I mean, it's expensive rock.
I'm sure it looks nice.
It does, it's not going to look the same.
My, my taste was.
For each to own.
Yeah.
All right, next we have an update to the baseball field.
Parks and Rec. Oh.
Well, no, the update for this was, obviously, someone was generous enough to do some of the work. I believe Parks and Rec was, or at least the chair of Parks and Rec received or was talked to about the bill for the stand. And they're looking to do the benches, it needs benches. So the discussion would be whether is that something that should be on an article or can possibly be something that we can capitalize, meaning Parks and Rec from ARPA funds.
My only observation is Parks and Rec received $5,000 in funding for this fiscal year. And are there any currently scheduled expenditures within the year, I think it's still 5,000. At least that's what showed up on the financials.
Yeah, and I don't know how up to date that is with all the reconciliation between offices. I know we have some expenses coming up that will get voted on for the holiday stuff. And I also know that with Oktoberfest coming up, even though it's in the next fiscal year, it does require a lot of funds that we kind of use some of the ending to buy the gaming supplies, which at the last Oktoberfest, we were completely wiped out, so we're starting back from scratch. So we try to kind of stagger that just to, so I'm not really sure. I know that the benches that we were looking at, they're not super cheap, I think it was a total of.
Like 1,500 a piece.
1,500 a piece, so we need two of them.
I mean, I like the idea of ARPA going to multiple groups. It's just that.
Parks and Rec is going to be having a meeting this week, so that's something that can be put on their agenda for further discussion to see where the funds and if it's something that they could fund. But technically, as of right now, I don't even know if that, the park, the baseball field is part of Parks and Rec. So that is another issue or question, I should say. Because technically, as of right now, it's, even though it would make sense and, you know, it's a park, it doesn't fall under Parks and Rec. It's always been the town and whoever is using it spruces it up for what they need.
Susan Turnbull, 1089 Nebraska Tree Road, it's looking at me everywhere. Is there a Wright Memorial Field trust? You have, there are a lot of little trusts out there that have money and there might, it's probably one that's got Wright Memorial Field on it.
I don't recall seeing one, but we can check that up.
Yeah, I've never heard of it either, but I will definitely ask the accountant to look into it.
And I, I do think it's very appropriate that our town's Parks and Recreation Committee have ownership of our town's parks. And, I mean, I think if they could feel like they had our support, should they accept that? I think going forward, it is, they have access to the parks. And I did notice actually that the shed, the door was wide open the other day. What's that?
There's no door on it.
Oh, really? That's going to be a home for animals. But I don't know if it's, if we can make a motion to formally welcome them to take responsibility, accountability for our town's park.
I would consider that after they've had their meeting.
Okay.
I'm making my notes, so they can put it on their agenda.
They can discuss the expenses and they have money and they don't have money.
And they might need some, because why wouldn't we be funding the annual upkeep rather than trying to find money?
Right.
And someone, nobody owns it. I mean, the board of selectmen might give permission to put in these reading things, but what do we know about that area? Like, we're going to go on a field trip to, and I think that's what you guys ended up doing is, like, but they use it. I think they should have the authority to.
I agree, I just let them have their meeting first and let them discuss and come back to us with a plan.
So Proxess, I believe, will be having a meeting Thursday, which will be, get posted. So then I can give an update for the following agenda.
I think you want to include the call.
I agree.
We're going to have somebody take care of the park.
We've talked about that, a committee on Parks and Rec. And again, it always goes back to the friends of the bandstand, you know, the friends of the common, who really, because Parks and Rec gets, especially when the summer program starts, million calls and emails trying to schedule bands and who's this? And, you know, it sounds silly, but like, I don't know, get ahold of this person and, you know, we're all just trying to, but it's, it's not us, so.
Yeah, let them have their meeting, discuss this, come back to us. Decision.
Okay. Okay.
I, um, scoured the interweb, um, and, and, um, many towns that have policies on volunteers. And took the liberty to amend one, um, creatively. And drafted it for consideration and I, I think, um, the labor release indemnification, um, would be beneficial, as you recommended the last time, have town council, uh, review it. Um, but the policy basically explains the, why we are seeking volunteers. Um, and then, um, what a volunteer can expect, um, types of volunteers, on that there is a, um, uh, we would expect them to hold harmless the town. Uh, they're not employees, they're not covered by benefits. However, they are required to take the, um, uh, conflict of interest ethics training. And they may have to have a quarry or a sorry if they're involved with the children, with children or the elderly. There's an application, uh, which is right now, the only volunteer application we have is if you want to be on a, a board or committee. But I think it allows you to say you want to just be a general volunteer. Um, and then if you're under 18, you can't operate machinery or engage in hazardous, uh, work, so they can't help the highway department. And, uh, the Board of Selectmen may adopt protocols and guidelines to carry out this policy.
Subject to council review.
Okay. So move. Hi.
Bye. Discussion. Probably move this into January. We only have a tax rate section.
Right.
That's the major thing.
I did my best trying to fit that in the email, understanding all the moving pieces.
I mean, and, and I, I'm trying to think what town I saw, might have been Rutland. It has like this whole timeline, starting in September or something, October, so that we have plenty of time, um, to not be so down to the wire. Cause I think we've had it in November in the past, right?
We even had it in October.
Okay.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
I think to like, you know.
They're waiting on the state.
Well, and also the turnover, right, new staff, new personnel, people adopted and, and, you know, settling into their roles. I'm sure it took, uh, some toll on it as well.
Doesn't look like there's any urgent articles submitted at this point, so.
So, um, I know I talked to Lori and she said January and February could be, again, because there's nothing pressing on there, so.
Yep. Yep.
January.
Well, we have one.
The eighth is one?
Yes, no.
The 22nd is one?
Yes, no, yeah, 22nd is one.
Uh, when is, um, Mount of the Kingdom, that's the 50th?
Yep, so. We could, you guys could do it on 22nd if you want it to be a regular meeting day. Oh, is it 29th? Well, it can be during the week too.
Maybe the 16th, Tuesday. They have the Mount of the Kingdom. Between that two, regular meetings.
Is there anything as far as like the number of days it has to be posted before?
14 days.
And so that means that we have to approve it. Is it business days?
Regular days, but not the, um, I'm not sure about the holiday. I know the weekends, you can count the weekends.
So would the sixth be, um, not sixth, would the eighth? No, the eighth wouldn't be, so it would have to be the 26th would be the meeting before that.
Yeah, because it has to get approved at a, at a meeting to get posted. Which would be the meeting after Christmas, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And if you do the 29th, 30th, you're going then down into the first week. There's a holiday, June 1st.
22nd. What do you think of the council?
Yeah.
And that is a meeting day. 22nd, so like in past meetings, do a quick meeting to approve the warrant.
Yeah.
At the, wherever fire station, if it's held still there. And the regular ones. Of January. 22nd.
So are we keeping the warrant open? Or is it being closed and then reopened? Okay. Okay, so close on Friday?
It did.
A lot of stops though.
Will they be resubmitted? No. I got mine in before. Town hall was closed.
And speak to Alan.
And I heard from the senior assessor and she was very much hopeful that that would be.
Yes.
Okay.
I think everybody was hoping, because it just would, I mean, Andrea and I sat with a calendar and we're going, oh my gosh, I don't know, there's a lot of moving pieces and one little off with any.
And the numbers all change.
Yeah.
Yep.
I will let council know.
So are, are we, so we would be reopening the warrant at some point or are we saying it's closed for good?
It's up to us.
Okay, okay. I'm just, it gives people more time if there's anything. Because at this point, we would only be submitting what was received at the, up to Friday.
Why don't we reopen it?
Okay.
10 days from now? If we reopen it again tomorrow.
We did the first time.
Oh, it doesn't matter, I'm just asking.
And do we need a constable for that?
No.
Okay.
So if we open it, what's, tomorrow's the 14th. So we can do it, 10 days would bring it to Thanksgiving, the Friday after Thanksgiving. From the 14th to 24th.
Hi.
Hi. I shall tell meeting article requests.
These are the ones that we have so far on behalf of Board of Selectmen's office, based on, uh, talking to Lori. There is, this one is just $135.48 for past Amazon bills. And like, this is the end of the cleaning up. So this is one. It has exactly the invoice.
This is the stuff they didn't bill us for.
Yes, and I've done a lot of cleaning up, so for it to be only $135 is very minimal. This one is for $102.10, is for the ambulance stabilization. This one Lori brought to our attention that when the account was closed, I, I don't know where the amount was off, but now it's negative $102.10 and it just has to be brought down to zero. The highlighted.
Where does that number come from?
I honestly don't know.
Treasure box.
Lori provided it to me from.
Who gives it to her?
Ask her. That's the email that she sent out when she was doing all her year-end closing.
I thought we made the motion on the floor to close that account, whatever was left.
It was a number or with whatever was left. Yes.
So how can we be?
I'll ask her, I'll double check on that one. This one is for $2,290.97, which is for Springbrook for last fiscal year. This is the overlap of how they were billing the accounting software. Remember, they were billing it from April to April versus like a full July, so that they had to split it in half and it fell between the cracks, so that's.
It told them July to June, they didn't do it, they were doing it for April, because that's April. So we were expecting this.
So when we got the full invoice, we could only cover the portion that was from July to, but that's the remaining. And then this one is also brought to by Lori, which is for $4,956.16, which was for the EMPG grant. Um, she said that when, it seems to be that possibly when the conversion of the software to Springbrook, um, software, she can't figure out where this money went, but probably, well, no, says it, it went to free cash versus going to the appropriate.
To your grant account.
Which is all cleared on that end, but it just has to, now it's negative, so it needs to be.
So it's just transferring cash to.
From free cash, I believe, yeah.
When it's a free cash, it shouldn't.
This is a transfer. And then the other rest that you guys can.
Sam, Parks and Rec. This is the, um, those are the benches.
So she still submitted it in case that was the route. Up seeing that it's going to be extended.
So there are basically three options, a warrant or an article, uh, out of their funds or our. So we can wait. Um, so the Board of Health is requesting, uh, made a request during the annual budgeting process, um, last year to fund, um, five hours for a clerk instead of two hours. Um, and it was not, um, approved or presented at the annual town meeting for that. Um, and so the Board of Health is requesting an additional $1,850 to fund the Board of Health part-time wages account, um, to allow for the, uh, funding at five hours, um, per week.
Seems $6,000 into the elections and expenses. Due to the added three special elections this fall. She'll give us an exact. Roughly 6,000.
Okay.
This one is council on aging. To increase the cap on their revolving account. 5,000. They have a need for 10,000.
Hey, I, um, I, I spoke with Barbara, uh, from COA and, you know, tried to explain that it's a revolving account, so it has, you know, as much as it comes in, has to go out. And right now it seems like only, it's only taken in and not a lot is going out. Um, so of course it's gonna add up quicker, you know, she was trying to compare it to, or initially to build an inspector and all, you know, everybody else has a bigger cap, but their intake is much larger. Uh, so that was, you know, her initial re, uh, reasoning, I tried to explain it to her that I, you know, I don't see a lot, or she's not putting, they're not putting out a lot of expenses coming out, so it's only in, which could be a red flag during audit or anything like that. So it's really, again, up to the Board of Selectmen if you want to proceed with that or not.
Paul Roche from Gaffney Road. They have been in a state of flux over their finances. And we've been working very hard to get it corrected, straighten out line items. Uh, they do want to increase several programs. And everybody on the council is very nervous about the $5,000 cap. Increasing the cap isn't going to cost the town a penny. I think it would make a lot of people, you know, more, much more comfortable. Uh, again, $10,000 isn't an excessive number, I mean, it's not something you have to worry about going out and buy a vehicle or something like that. But I, I think, I think they would feel that, uh, for one thing, that it would give them a better working area, you know, I think it would be a, a plus for the, the new coordinator to be able to do more programs. To be able to allow for payment of more transportation, you know, like if they want to take a bus somewhere or whatnot. Uh, $5,000 is kind of meager. So, again, it's not going to cost the town anything.
Yeah.
I have yet, in all my time, ever seen anybody audit or review any of the funds and any of the revolving accounts in the entire town. So it's not something that I think would raise any flags on an audit. I mean, I think that's the reason behind it really.
They're going to increase programs, they're going to bring more money and.
So say, say like they want to do a program to take everybody to a, a handover show in Worcester.
Yeah.
You know? But that could be quite expensive by the time you provide transportation and tickets, so.
Okay.
I think it's important that, um, anybody with a revolving account understands that the idea is to take in and put out. Um, not to just hoard it. Um, and I, I think the council on aging didn't have the, um, organizational, um, depth that they have currently and there's opportunity for them to grow. Um, and personally, I think, um, let the, let the town speak to it. If the, if the town has a concern about it, they can vote this down. But I, I definitely think it should go to the town meeting, fresh town meeting.
Yeah, it's for any better than that.
And all the other, um, boards, uh, somebody went through and increased, and I understand Board of Health collects a lot of money, these boards do collect a lot of money, but let's not put any handcuffs on a new board that's really trying to find its way and, um, take away an obstacle.
They figure out which account is to be charged for Melanie.
Which, which account?
Their salary account? Do you know?
Uh, that I don't know, because I don't know, they weren't showing anything coming out of that line item for her.
Yeah.
Her town salary.
Yeah.
Her town salary. I don't know what it found it was being taken out of.
And they've only had access to it for one month. Uh, well, two, I guess. Um, so I think they're still figuring it out.
Well, Mrs. Hendra is coming first thing.
Well, they have, they have the correct line item now.
I mean, Friday morning.
With them done previously, I.
Right. But I'm just saying, the accountant is going to be in the building on Friday. So Mrs. Hendra has already set her slot time. She'll be here Friday morning to meet with Lori and hopefully answer any questions and straighten out any loose ends.
Great.
Melanie has been paid, right?
Yes, as far as I'm, to my knowledge, yes.
Well, I mean, and I, and I've seen, you know, payments that Barbara's been.
I thought I saw.
So we can see right there what account number is.
Yeah.
Listed.
Well, she was initially paid.
And then there's the grant.
Out of the, um, she, so initially when Melanie became an employee, she, it was on an article. So she, that's where her money for her employment came out of. Her Zumba as a vendor was being paid and currently still being paid, I believe, out of the formula grants. So those two are same person, one is the employee, one as a vendor. Where they, and then when for the new fiscal year, then a new line item with her, her, um, ten thousand plus the amended three hundred from the stipends was added. So ten thousand, three hundred. She does have a line item that says, I think, like senior center coordinator or something like that.
Well, there's coordinator and isn't there director?
Well, they took the three hundred from the director spot and moved it there. So there's nothing.
In the.
The line item is there, but there's no funds in it.
So could they have been charging the special article?
Yeah, but then that would make that, I mean, I think that ran out. Lauren will answer all those questions, I'm sure, on Friday morning because she did say she got a very detailed mess email from Mrs. Hendra and it said Mrs. Hendra was on the phone. She's like, I could tell. Cause she knew what she was talking about. And so according to Mrs. Hendra too, they said that they straightened out some things. I don't know if it was that particular, um, situation, but that some things have been shifted around.
Licenses. Flash three of liquor.
Yes, at that time of year, again, I sent out the renewals for all the retail liquor license, which would be Agronomy. Golfers Arm, Quail Hollow. Matthew Anderson for Route one forty eight and Variety. Ocam Pine Acres, The Package Store. And Pine Acres Lodge, The Restaurant. But those all have to be in by the seventeenth and will be then added onto the next, uh, selectmen's meeting to sign off to send over to A, B, C, C. Or there, um, which they need by the end of the month as well. I also sent out, um, to Mr. Mark Stellato for Breakaway for his class two. Randy Packard for his class two on OKM Trailer is in sales. And those are the only two. Um, BHT, which is the old air most, um, is not for renewal based on planning board, which I, he emailed me, the gentleman that always is in touch, um, asking for, for that, at that time of year. And I told him that he's not up for renewal because of he let his special permit lapse. I CC'd Mr. Warbass on it. He was, he said he didn't know. So Phil did send him the letter, stayed in. He had lapsed in. Now we'll be doing that whole process if I'm correct.
Right.
So. Anything else?
Special permit was issued, I think, two years ago, approximately, Phil Warbass, planning board. And you have the terms of the special permit, you have thirty days to record in the registry and then notify the planning board with the book and page. Was never recorded. And then, uh, the other stipulation is if you don't do anything at all for a year, permit lapses. So we told him that and he said, what do I have to do? We sent him a new special permit application form so that he can redo the process.
And once he's done with that process, he could resubmit to, for the class two, and then that would be up to the board. If you want to reinstate it at whatever time that part is done. Usually it's reinstated by the end of December. So it can start fresh for a new calendar year. But the board would have the right to reinstate it at any point, the class two.
But we're not going to issue a license that
Not until.
Hasn't got a special.
Oh, no, I'm saying once that's done, that could be, let's say in March, if you wanted to then reinstate it from March to December, that would be addressed at that time.
Okay. I want to see what the business is going to be.
Yeah. There's no indication they're actually moving ahead with either, uh, Copart or the other auto insurance.
Have you been there recently?
No.
Seen all the overgrowth on the driveway going down.
Oh, Gladys would drive by. Yeah, it's getting pretty woodsy.
Yeah.
Somebody down there recently, huh?
Yeah.
The, uh, Horizon guys had to go down there and pack some of the poles. The overgrowth and everything.
Oh, yeah.
But the thing is, uh, National Grid did tell me that that's a loop. That power that goes down there is a loop and comes back up.
Oh.
So technically if something goes down because, or whatever.
Yeah.
Colbrook Road shuts off.
Oh, so would National Grid have to cut that loop and just join it at the road?
Yeah.
Just cut them out of it?
They don't have keys to the gate. They can't get in there. They end up using a neighbor's yacht to go through.
Yeah, go right around the fence. Yeah.
So, but anyway, they had brought that up too.
Could National Grid just cut it at the road and slice it across?
Verizon said they could do that.
Okay, yeah.
But that would negate the fire alarms and everything at that building.
And then I just have one more question in regards to a class two. Mr. Jonathan Poe from The Package Store, uh, expressed to me that he wanted to, uh, reapply or renew his class two. But last year he let it lapse for this year. But he's saying because it's still technically under a year, he doesn't have to start the process all over again. His last one expired December thirty first of twenty twenty-two. So, but now he wants to reinstate it. But it's been just shy of a year. Can he reinstate it for twenty-four? Or does the process have to start all over?
Talk my head out of here.
I thought because he left, but he said.
Calendar year.
Right. But he's like, well, it hasn't been one full year since my lapse. So can.
So renew for twenty-three maybe?
But twenty-three is over.
But maybe that's the only what you.
But that would be then up to the board to re, see if you want to renew for twenty-three and then.
If you renewed for twenty-three and then he's going to renew for twenty-four.
Yeah.
He's going to pay two fees.
I mean, I'm not, you know, if he comes and expresses that, I'm not.
What's the fee?
Fifty dollars. For our class two.
Phil, does the special permit for that area cover that?
Uh, John does have a special permit. He does. And it includes the sale of used vehicles, uh, subject to class, class two or three license.
Oh. So you want twenty.
It's got a permit.
No, I just wanted to give you guys an update as what's out there. But once they and I will also then give, um, follow up with the, with Wendy to make sure all the taxes are up to date before renewing. And providing the licenses to be signed and delivered.
Last three meetings.
Well, it's because of all the wording on the top of the other one pushes everything down.
Boytime off by law.
Well, that is in regards to when, uh, Diane Peterson came to the Board of Selectmen a couple of meetings ago. With questions to a past employee who never took time off. And maybe they were entitled to it. This is council's response.
And at this point, no one has, um, requested, the individual has not requested anything.
No, that came before.
Right.
The, her previous board.
Yeah. And I, and I think, um, my understanding of that interaction was just, did you know there's a bylaw that says people twenty hours or less that work regular hours are entitled to X, Y, and Z. And it does impact current employees. And I think she gave an example that there was somebody that worked here for a long time that also didn't have anything. I think at this point, we need to make sure our job descriptions that are given out are changed because it says not benefit eligible, I think.
And I don't know if that's.
Say that or is it saying exempted?
I thought it was no benefits.
No, I think the new ones say exempted, non-exempt.
So that would be for hours, hours. But what about, does it say anything about benefits? It said not benefit eligible or something.
I think that in certain job descriptions, maybe old ones, I do recall seeing that for sure. But I know that in the new ones. It says exempt right at the top.
No.
I didn't email that.
I only got one job description.
But the rules and breaks that I emailed.
Uh, one, one job description.
Oh, okay.
Well, when we have a SharePoint or a OneDrive. Yeah.
But it does, on the new ones, it says, um, not exempt or exempt.
Oh, and, and they just need to know that has to do with whether they get paid over time. So I think we have to communicate either with their appointing authority or if we're the appointing authority, letting them know what their benefits are if they are regular hours. So I guess we have to determine what is regular hours versus per DM.
Bylaw defines that.
Okay.
Basically what council is saying that the former employee does nothing, we can do financially.
Well, I thought it said that we could, we had the option up to three years.
And that's what he said to me on the phone, but then he had stated he was going to put it all in right in. You know, as he looked more into it, and this is what he sent me today.
Ultimately, in my opinion, there is no basis for the town to provide retroactive pay or back pay in exchange for lack of receipt of paid time off. We're going to make sure that the current employees are getting their time off.
Which they manually track, right?
Which is what I brought up last time about.
Yeah. I really hope Harper's.
Yeah.
Cause each department can enter. I mean, you can either give it to all, to the treasurer, but Harper's, each department can enter. They're owned and you can keep track of, you know, your department and employees.
If I use Harper for my work and every employee is loaded with their, their hours and they can see what they have available and you can pre-program their holiday pay, um, and the supervisor just goes in and approves it. And then the treasurer would simply get, uh, uh, completed and process it.
Yeah.
If you've noticed, payrolls that we get from these departments are all different.
Different forms.
All different forms.
Different days.
They track different times. We, we need to standardize this once and for all. I mean, easier for us to understand, easier for the treasurer to understand.
It's a manual process of data entry, which is open to errors. And it's time. So yes, there's a cost potentially to add this component to Harper's. But there's a cost to all these departments manually entering. It's not difficult. Harper's is very easy to use.
I learned it just a little bit basic and I was like, it can be done.
I mean, it's an, there's an app for it. You know, the supervisor can just go in and approve all. Uh, especially exempt employees. Um, it's very easy. But I think the only thing we need to do based upon leave of council is inform all of the affected twenty-three, twenty-four employees that are eligible for holiday sick and PTO.
Yeah.
Going forward. It has looked that there's something about sick time and can carry over into the new year.
There's submissions of the bylaw.
Yeah, like the bylaws should be changed, should be updated, I think.
It's, it's lacking in other areas. It is not up to date with any of the state laws. And that's one reason why this really shouldn't be a bylaw.
Right.
It should be rules, regulations, policies and procedures. They can keep up to date with things.
Yeah. Yeah.
If you look at the rules and benefits and stuff that the study did, you put them all together way beyond this bylaw.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it's, it's matching with policies.
Yeah, I, I, I think we should look to, um, rescind that bylaw. And does that have to be at an annual town meeting?
Human Resources Napping Policy Creation Review.
Yep. So I, I did print out all of the, um, policies that you, um, the chair had emailed me when I first joined. Put them into one set. And I'm, I, I really feel like, um, probably could benefit some, from some, a table of content, contents. Some pagination to it. Um, I'd be happy to work on that. Right now it's in an A through C page numbered, and then D, E, and F are all separate.
Yeah, that's how Don Jacobs submitted them.
So, um, and then, um, do we have attestations that people have received those policies? So then I would say we probably, once we get that, we should distribute those, make them available. There were a few questions I had. I read them yesterday. That I think might need some, um, edits. Uh, and it alluded to something that we don't have, um, a policy, I think.
Oh.
But, um, I, I actually worked on it all yesterday and then forgot them at home. So, um, I'll go through and re-paginate one through whatever. And then I'll submit it maybe for the next, in advance of the next meeting.
Just a quick question to, would you give it in like a booklet form?
I think so.
Would it be wiser? Cause I know that we had talked about this before, would things change in like?
Chapters.
Well, yeah, you know, would it be wiser to do it in like something that you, a page can be torn and then just replace instead of, I, I don't know, thinking of like what would be best.
A lot of companies have all policies, policy number one, zero, one dot one. So you would pull that one and replace it.
Yeah.
But that would be i- in our example. They're like three sentences is one of our, part of our policy. So it would be a three hundred page policy manual. And right now it's like fifty, I think. But I, I mean, I think we can amend the title of the policy that's within it or something.
Or if there's an, oh no, you can't add it if it's already in a book. I'm just trying to think of like, if it's just one page, then it can just be added to it like someone's binder and like. If it's just one page, then it can just be added to it like someone's binder and like, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, ideally, I mean, in the corporate world, it's all online.
Yeah.
You don't print them because it could change tomorrow. So if you want the most current. Manual, you'd go on to OneDrive or SharePoint and, and see the current manual.
I guess it could be kind of like, here's the most current.
Right.
Right now, but as they change.
Always refer to.
Online. Just because we can't keep printing and give me, bring me your binder so we can replace the page or.
We don't, we don't issue ma- employee manuals. It's all online. But I, I definitely think there's stuff in there that. If we're gonna enforce, they definitely.
Still be online, like create a policy tab and then have a manual, like page for them to sign acknowledging that. They were told where it is. So, you know, it's up to their discretion and their responsibility to go on there and look at it. You know what I mean? Just to have something in their personnel record to say they signed saying that they were informed to where all the. Policies and procedures are listed on the website.
Program that will do that too. And we change the police policy. Guys would go on the computer, understand the policy and electronic signature. Goes right into the file.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if, if we had an HR person, they probably would come with all of those things. So. But if we work in the days that we're in, we certainly could make it work.
Yeah, I mean, it's still an upgrade.
Yeah, it is.
Employees can go online.
I mean, you can, if we do Office three sixty-five, you can have a Microsoft form where they go in and they fill out. And attest, and then it goes to an Excel spreadsheet that you could run a report on. My, I, I tried to scan it, but it was too many pages to just scan, so I have to do it from here. This is an example of what the Board of Health. Purchased, and it actually has a. Keyboard that flips up, so. But honestly, I'm overwhelmed by paper. And, and I think if we could ever get to the point where we had OneDrive or SharePoint or something like that. Having something that's easy like this. There's enough that we get that I think it's only appropriate that the town has resources for its. Elected boards that are getting this amount of paper. You just can't keep track of it. And this, I think, was seven hundred dollars. They range between seven hundred for a tablet where you have the magnetic. Keyboard to a thousand, eleven hundred for a hard. You know, attached keyboard that you can't, you can detach. But I think it's a resource as we move into the point for century that is very fitting. With the, with the finance, all of the budgets, all of that. I, I think it's an appropriate use of investing in infrastructure to provide whoever is on the Board of Selectmen. The resource. So the most was twelve hundred. On Amazon. Uh, Microsoft Surface.
As these, I think they do.
And are reduced.
A lot easier, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask Aaron if he could send me like any links of ones, so I can just look it up on.
Yeah, I, I'm trying. This was, this was a Board of Health purchase. I was trying to remember, we got iPads from a grant. But this was a purchase that we bought on Amazon, so. It'll be in the history. Because I ended up ordering like a pen for it and. I guess they call it pencils. But, and then the keyboard and the hard case. I mean, I see other boards of selectmen online and they, each person gets their packet. On their tablet. Yeah, so I, I, I don't know, I know when the Board of Health. Received funds at the beginning of COVID, we purchased laptops that we needed. Since we were using personal ones for like the vaccine clinics and. At that point, we didn't really, the town had never really used Office three sixty-five. People were just. Buying it and getting reimbursed, and we're still doing that in some respects today. But I don't know if CM Geeks can look, I, I did look on, online under government accounts. It was like eight dollars, ten dollars per user. For G three, there's, there's different options of that government, uh, Office three sixty-five, but not super expensive.
Yeah, I think I talked to Paul lightly, like I ran into him on personal time and it just lightly came up. And I think he had said between eight to twelve dollars more per. You know, depending how many you get, if it's gonna be everyone or.
I think we're paying ten dollars now just for email.
Right.
And I, I think it was like eighteen, got you Microsoft Teams, it got you SharePoint, it got you OneDrive, it, I mean. It was ki- kind of like, why wouldn't we have? At least looked at all of the boards and departments that might need other programs. I mean, if we can add to individuals, different users, although I think the SharePoint. Is something that we should have for all employees, including elected and appointed. And, and we did hear from finance that there was money last year turned back. So we've been budgeting, but not utilizing.
Budgeting because we had every intention of doing this. Get discuss it.
So I can get some numbers from Paul.
Yeah.
And just see how much it is and kind of see where the budget lies. It should cover it, cause right now we have two line items for IT. Remember, this one under.
That's right.
The Board of Selectmen, they're both under the Board of Selectmen, but just in different areas. So I'm using one up and then once that one. I'll go to the next one. So they should just really be combined or one.
Yeah, we did have.
Yeah, and, and, and fifteen dollars or twenty dollars a user.
Yeah, and now would the board wanna do one for every email address or now are you gonna kind of go through and say? You know what I mean? Like, not this person, not this person, the, you know.
I think, I mean, I, I think on the backend, if, if CM Geeks manages it by user. They should be able to say this user for the town of Overcam has all of these. Features or.
He would then say, tell me which ones you want to have.
Versus G one, just email.
Right, or, right, exactly.
SharePoint or something like that.
So then it would kind of boil back down to.
I mean, as a supervisor, I get a, an annual form that says, what do nurses get? What do aides get? What do social workers get? Badge, laptop, cellphone? So you could do the same thing with the data. What a part of our IT infrastructure do they get? Email? Yes. They need their own email account. They need the SharePoint access. We definitely could set that up.
Yeah, cause I think of like, fire department, they're on call, so it's really the chief. But police department, they all have emails, but primarily it's the chief, the admin to his office. Metarosian, and then a couple of the other ones that are using it more to do like the Grant Tucker. But I'm talking about just like the regular patrol part times, like they don't use it then that much on that end.
I think there's risk if we don't give them at least email. And if we're gonna start putting policies out there, we've gotta give them access.
Yeah, they, they all have email. I'm just talking about like having the.
The extra. But that's where we could select, like the administrative people, maybe the chairs of departments get, or the finance committee would get Excel. But if they had access to the SharePoint, whoever's creating the file could give them access to that file. Which, if you can get access without having edit access. So you only pay for the edit part. And it's better to lock it down so that if one person's managing it, they're the only one that need the access. So I think we'll get an estimate of what it would cost per user for, I think the G three is for under. Two hundred and fifty employees. Which we're still at that.
And would you be available, Aaron, if, if Paul McKenzie had more depth of questions as you are? You know, know a little bit more and. Kind of deal with it in your own personal.
And I think we're like the Board of Selectmen admin, that you should have access to Adobe Acrobat. Where you can get it, but you're paying for it. Which should be under the government account.
Yeah.
So that we're not paying taxes and.
I give, every month I give Overcam a dollar ninety-nine.
That's great. Um, the only thing that I know came up was that there, there was some vandalism on Tom property. And I just, I wonder if there should be signage. That says no trespassing. Or. Is it sufficient to not post it? And I, I trust that the chief, that that was a written complaint. A logged. Okay, good.
So where do you get the sign? Is that from the highway department? No, that would. Oh, no trespassing, okay.
I have a truck full from the abbey. I'm supposed to put up their posted signs.
Because I know that there's you.
They have the posted no trespassing and then.
I can order on Amazon.
We, we know how to order on Amazon.
Well, in that situation, now you're gonna get posts and everything, because if you wanna post it on both roads, you're gonna have post signpost on the ground.
And who would be doing that? Oh, me? Oh, let me take off this hat and put this one on.
One of the volunteers that we, I think Susan, you're a volunteer now.
Hey, one sign for a sign.
If you really wanna keep people away, should you put up a toxic waste sign?
And appreciation to all those involved in making sure that that was immediately remedied. Yes, so moved. Just that. I think it's, it would be beneficial to remind all boards and committees about the importance of. The public, and, and this may fall under the town clerk, but I, I think at least of the appointed individuals from the Board of Selectmen. The public records, public, open meeting law, posting of agendas. Completion of minutes. It doesn't hurt to remind people of the importance of those things. I, I think the email that you sent was very succinct. I mean, there are, there are links to all of these things. But I, I think it's very easy for people to become volunteers and like, forget about it. And to me, there's nothing more important than transparency and accountability and. We need to follow the rules that are, that are there and then make sure that. We're checking, you know, check, inspect what you expect. And if, if people are appointed and we never circle back, and then we find out a year later they haven't done it, well. We're all responsible for that. And so I think it's a reminder for everyone, like we've been doing with. Giving the information to the boards and committees about the social media policy. Let's just do a friendly reminder. And if you need help. Like MMA has fantastic resources, which I don't know that boards and committees know about, cause I didn't know about it. And I think we could give them those resources so that they can feel more comfortable, because it is scary. And so nobody wants to do anything wrong, but we can help them do it right.
Hey, Aaron, this is Steve Donard, one fifty-seven Rams Road. If you, if you need any assistance with social media policies. From my technical perspective, I'm more than willing to assist. Bring an executive, just to give opinion and, you know, colloquy, I'm more than willing to help out with that. Obviously, I'll be following your guidance and the board's guidance, but if you want any help with that, please let me know and I'll be more than willing to assist.
So the finance committee did receive a draft, I believe. Yeah, it should have, right? Yeah. So if you wanna provide feedback there, I, I have already gone ahead and. Updated the draft and sent it to the board in anticipation of our next meeting, but. I don't believe any other boards have provided any input as of yet, but we'll be discussing that next, at the next meeting.
Wonderful. And if you want, I'll, I'll review it and I'll, I'll, I'll give notes where necessary. That's cool.
And, and what I, what I liked about that is it is complimenting pages. Recommended, but they referred to your HR department and I laughed, so I took that out. But, yeah, it's a good, it's a good draft.
No, it's a good draft and I, I'll review it. And give anything that I, I find, you know, in or out, right? Obviously, we want colloquy. Nothing against any person, it's more about like policies, procedures, right? And just being respectful of others, so, you know, I'm just going from there.
Just gonna say something.
That was great, Kevin.
I, I did have one thing.
Susan turned like maybe nine to break you. I have a show and tell with me today. I have OKM. Oh, wow. This is OKM circa nineteen eighty-six. We all remember all this?
Yes.
I had a big hand in cutting a lot of these trees. This tree and the line of them that there were were between Nancy Howes and the library and the Friends of the Library and Nancy Howe took those down before they fell over the library. Kevin took this down on Memorial Day weekend nineteen ninety-nine and then maybe two thousand. Um, this was this Robinson tree on the corner of the library lot and it was shading the uh, library and causing algae to grow and therefore the slate didn't slip and the snow stayed and it was ruining the roof. Town Hall, we all know about our ill-fated elm tree. Uh, church, this is the dwelly spruce which died and beyond that would be the uh, oak tree planted for the hundred and fiftieth anniversary which fell over. And we have the three big uh, spruce trees which were hit by lightning. And then we have assorted maple trees up Maple Street and so and ashes and assorted ashes and maples down Maple Street. And then we have out behind the library, the big huge um, maple tree that was cut in two thousand fourteen. And we have Kevin's and my agreement to get rid of the trees between the library and the ball field circa two thousand and eight. And we, some point in time, we cleaned up all the trees down along where corner road between the road and the ball field. Okay, this is nineteen eighty-six. This is nineteen ninety-six. Look at all those pretty maple trees. So I said to Mike Brunel, the tree warden, we don't have any trees in the center of town anymore. And he said, yep, we don't have any trees. And he said, drop, come by and gives me a letter from signed by Lucy that there were going to be some trees planted at the end of the um, rehab of Maple Street. I'm not sure that she wants to replant maples. I'm not sure maples are a good choice because of the salt. Um, I don't know how many people along Maple Street want trees. Kevin is not gonna like this. I I, we had maple trees out here. I think there's still one left. There used to be big ones there and they're gone and then there were three small ones planted and those have since passed or are about to pass. I actually was asking Mike because I wanted three trees planted between where corner road and the ball field. I thought that would be fine, but apparently I tipped off this tree planting up Maple Street. I I've been the end of a lot of trees in the center of town. Now I want some back.
What's the right of way um, off of the sidewalk? Are there any more?
There's no, there's no way out from somewhere town.
Okay, yeah, because it's all sidewalks now.
Yeah, I'm not sure you can put new trees going up there, but I just thought maybe a couple's down there. The ones all in common are nice and, you know, we've got our our poor helm tree which half fell, but um.
To be surviving.
I should make a copy of that.
Okay.
Can I have? Mike Brunel gave it to me. It's written to him, signed by Lucy.
Twenty twenty-one.
A lot going on down there.
I don't know. All I wanted was trees down here and I ended up because no one knows more about the trees in the center of town than you do. You cut the wall. You go tell the board.
One signature on there? Evidently it wasn't a board decision.
Unless she was.
Unless we authorize through the.
I don't know. I didn't, I I I wanted trees along the ball field.
I mean, it helps with erosion. I mean.
It just kind of makes it look less sterile. And even if it was something like the um, locusts which have Kevin's not a big fan of the leaves. I don't blame him that when there were all those trees behind the library and the big huge maple, there were so, and there were so many leaves. He was forever dealing with leaves, but these locusts produce so few tree leaves. Sort of pest resistant.
That should be for the Parks and Rec Committee, maybe.
The bank's not a road either, so.
Definitely not gonna take a park now.
Doesn't now.
You wrote anymore, can we put a burn there?
Yeah. It's aesthetics.
Yeah.
We're a small, a small rural community and we don't have much left for trees. It was chosen not to replant the dwelling tree, the oak tree, so there's too fewer trees there and it just, it just doesn't quite look like this nineteen eighty-six. I think this is cute. It's been in my house all this time.
Although when we talk about history and you look at the historical association books, there were no trees, like this all.
Turn of the century.
Yeah.
But there were maple trees in front of the library, the in the seventies. I didn't get here until the eighties, but would you like that in the form of a warrant article for free trees along?
I mean, it doesn't cost them a lot of money for ornamental or uh, yeah, for any of those trees. It's like fifty dollars a piece.
I know. But at the time, you have something with a little bit of size, they're quite. Oh, I forgot. I also cut the cherry tree that was in front of the library to put in the first well, which is the problem. And then we cut the second tree in front of the lot.
How big does it need to be when it gets put in? It'll grow up.
Well, I know, but something that's doesn't get mowed off the first season because I forgot that it was there.
I have a pin oak that's in my old house that is probably sixty feet tall right now that I put in in two thousand and five.
I I planted a row of little trees in my backyard in my house in Derry, New Hampshire. My next door neighbor came over and mowed my lawn.
You had some.
He just flattened them all off.
Yeah, but I mean, I got a a fifty dollar one with, it was probably five feet tall
Yeah.
um, when I put it in. I'm sure we have money for that. That doesn't need to be in article.
These quadrille land trust has a tree program.
Yeah, I mean, I know where was, everybody in where could get a free tree to plant. I wondered how they got into that.
Yeah, once you have the state gives them out too.
Yeah. I wonder how you get them.
Yeah, I mean, the trees that this.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the Worcester County Conservation does it also.
July.
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 We can work around you, Kevin. We can work around you.
Don't work past you.
I just guess I'm feeling guilty about all the trees I've removed from the center of town.
Removed them for a reason.
Right.
And make it look better than it did.
Yeah.
So now you want to put them back.
Well, yeah. I, well, I if we could have kept some of the trees along that edge, but nothing there was.
There was nothing along that edge to
There was nothing.
Sumac and and.
No, there was nothing that you could cut out and save as a tree.
We did a lot of work to make it look like.
Oh, it looks really good.
Good as it is and now you want to throw trees back on.
Trying to make it look rural and not sterile.
Just think, by the time they mature, you won't have to worry about it.
And that obviously gonna see it.
Parabel's young.
All right. Old business, we have the old schoolhouse situation. It appears March fourth nineteen sixty-three, the town did adopt. Actually, it was. Nineteen and nineteen twenty together. It gives us the authority on the chapter forty-sixteen to remove snow private ways as well as repair private ways. And repair, both of them were adopted.
How is it that a lot of years later, we're finding things that were adopted at town meetings? Like, what else do we not know?
We asked Christine the other day. She does not have any book like that has, and we would have to go through every town meeting and see what was adopted.
Well, there are all those books upstairs. I was looking on Friday.
Are these more than, are these more than just the annual reports? That was in my office, Phil.
Yeah.
In my files.
This is from the town meeting, the annual town meeting in nineteen sixty-three.
So it should be in the nineteen sixty-three annual report.
Don and I had fun looking through other books.
My understanding is, in talking to two people down there, the lawyers are still waiting for some paperwork to be signed by a couple of the residents that live there. So that means we don't have it here and uh, and I really take a look at. So that's probably not gonna happen for, I would say, next month or two, which is snow season.
Right.
And I know we I guess we're open to suggestions. How do you wanna we should handle that?
Based on.
Based on that, I guess.
Based on that.
It's not a question. Just let it play out.
Based, the town adopted laws for us to do it, so we can do it.
Yeah.
Does it require any kind of a vote on top of that statute?
Not on top of that.
So we, you can simply authorize Kevin to do highway department too then.
Yep.
So I guess we want to encourage these people up, hurry up with the paperwork, go through the formal process that exists
Right.
between you and us.
Yep.
And do as quickly as we can, but in the interim.
But in the interim, he can
Okay.
take care of the road.
And is there any um, liability uh, assumed um, by doing this? Should there be an evaluation of the conditions of the road to start?
Well, you know the condition of the road.
Is it documented? Any concerns?
Well, yeah, I mean, my concerns with all the cracks in the road. The effect of falling, you know. More nicer roads. But my my thoughts of this is I just hope the owners, all the owners just just don't go
Right, right.
Wash their hands of this project, of this subdivision. Now that we're gonna, we're gonna maintain it. And I can see that happening.
What's meant as an interim situation?
This is, yeah.
That's, it's gonna be.
This is a
This is Edgus in the last area.
Only concerns I have there, that adds quite a bit to that side of the power room on that. You talk of two streets, three intersections and a cul-de-sac.
So you're gonna need additional funds for sand, salt and personnel.
Yep.
We do that.
I mean, we had that contract service, but I can't find it anywhere, that ten thousand for contract services. I don't believe it was put back into the budget.
Yeah, I don't think it was because it was a special article. See how it went. But you do need it. So that would have to come in on the special town.
Because you can
Put it into your budget.
You can overspend on snow removals.
That flower was taxed to the max right now.
Right.
When I add that's, you're you're adding at least, at least an hour and that's on a little piddly stone. At least an hour in that subdivision.
Yep.
So my my thoughts is to hire a pickup and hire a truck. They can plow. We'll sand it. They can plow. Until we figure something out.
They who?
Come on? No, no, we would hire
Not the town.
Private contractor for the town.
Yep.
We'll plow that subdivision.
What about sanding, salting?
We would sand it. It's it's a little little different just running through there, sanding it and plowing, cleaning it up, you know. So you might want to look and put an article on that special.
Well, we opened.
Yeah, good thing.
We opened it up.
Open it tomorrow.
So will you submit the article for the highway department?
Okay.
Oh, I don't know, or is that something the board should be doing?
You can do it with this.
Thanks, Kevin.
Anything else, Kevin? Have any correspondence?
Sorry. Oh, my only, uh, what I, just some correspondence was from Kathleen Dunn in regards to her public's records request uh, that she had submitted and was following up. And I know that the chair had stated to her, because she is a committee, she can just make those requests.
She she responded to me.
Oh, she did? Okay.
And she said that she was requesting it as a citizen, not as a committee member. So we can just provide it
Okay.
like any other citizen. That's no issue. They would like to come before us probably at a future meeting to discuss their responsibilities.
Yes, and I think that there was some concerns or address that they haven't been appoint uh, sworn in, but I, like I was telling Aaron, two years in a row, I've done the appointment letters that have been signed by the board and sent out, whether she received them or any member and has followed through or not, that's past my my role, but I have submitted those letters.
I think there's also a miscommunication between cable access advisory committee and internet committee. Cable advisory committee is owned by state law. Appointing authority makes the appointment, which we did. Those number of people. We can also expand their duties to include other things. We did conclude the internet.
Okay.
That project. It's the same committee. It's not two separate.
Right, the one that I send out that says cable slash and internet.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I know that I've emailed.
Partially, the committee thinks there are separate one from the cable licensing.
Yeah.
They're not. They're one and the same.
Okay, no, that makes sense, but like, I just wanted to make sure that she was getting um, any correspondence or emails because I know I've emailed and asked for receipt of the email and I, you know, I wasn't sure if the email was established or if there was an error.
She just established the C I C.
Oh, good. Great.
That's what she's up to using.
Okay, perfect.
But the board could actually, it has the option to negotiate the cable agreement without asking an advisory group to do it.
We don't have to.
Right.
We could do it ourselves.
And and so it is time sensitive. Um, and so I think it expires December nineteenth, maybe? It said December.
It's January.
Okay.
The actual license is January.
Oh, right, okay, but the agreement, I think.
The agreement might be December.
Yeah, okay. Uh, and did you hear from Spectrum?
I did not, and I've called. I emailed and I called. I called from my personal phone just to see if I've I've star six seven it. I don't know if that still works, but just in case, you know, nothing. And it is his number because it does say his name.
It's gonna be a government affairs number for Spectrum?
And it was in the, I went through the records from years past, the person, maybe the person prior to him, and it's the same number, but it must be like the same number that gets handed down, but now it says uh, John Mayer's name, so that's all I had, because I really didn't do much communicating with him. It was primarily like Suzanne would come in here and give us all the information. She was great at it. So I just emailed now in the attempts of trying as for the board, but crickets.
You you can file a complaint. With the uh, state agency. They're not responsive.
I think we should. I think we should. Especially if we're getting close to that deadline.
Our counsel has mapped out what we need to do. We need cooperation from Spectrum in order to do it. All they did was throw a sample contract at us.
Yeah. And since we really don't get to negotiate a whole lot.
No. Well, there's things in there about senior citizen discounts.
Oh, yeah.
Did you know about that? I didn't know about that.
I remember in my social worker days that they offered discounts to seniors, yeah?
And also to.
Phone companies do.
How much money we get from the cable to keep this up in.
Sure. The grants, equipment grants.
There's things in there we need to pay attention to.
I mean, and I don't think we need the channels, since we don't have the infrastructure to, to go on them anymore.
To do that.
I know. I remember offering to volunteer to do those back then. But at least the grants and the equipment, we, if if people who have Spectrum are paying into those fees, we should be collecting those and doing something with them.
Well, that's where this get paid, all this equipment get paid.
Okay. Oh, I thought it was our part, okay.
Nope, nope. That was that account. That account had, I believe, $17,000 in it.
Wow.
Yeah, spend any.
Yeah, it all came from there.
All that expenditure went to that.
So is there the possibility that even Zoom and the annual?
I was just going to say.
Being paid out of that?
Yeah, you know why? Because they're supposed to provide us with the equipment to get the cable channel open running. They have said they don't have anything to do with it. So we fall back on this. So that's where we should be spending that money. They're not going to step up.
Yeah, yeah. And so I have been in communication with that committee and said, once they're formed and meetings posted, I'll be happy to attend after Thanksgiving, I believe.
Okay.
Is there any approved update on Lucy?
Oh, yes, I wanted to give an update. She's home. I just found out tonight, too, while I was here. I didn't know in advance.
I got the car from her today, so.
And I, I heard it, and I called her, I'm like, are you home? She's like, yeah, I'm like, I just talked to you early. Yeah, she had every intent of coming tonight, which she was up and ready to, but because she had a doctor coming in to do an x-ray just on her tailbone or whatever the case might be, she had to wait for that. But she should be at the next one. And then she wanted to join in remotely, then she told me, but because they were coming in this, that, this timeframe, she didn't want to be, you know, caught off guard. But yes, so she shall be back. Next meeting.
Excellent.
One thing I did want to say is I, there's movement on the telephone poles and internet being turned on, and so I did see East Hill Road, all the poles are out. I know Sanders Road was being turned, people could, the person could turn.
Yeah, they got all their connections in now that the land, the homeowners have to contact Spectrum to get tidied that house.
Grace Lane, same thing, they're all up and running, and so.
That's progress.
At least they're doing that, but it's really not even Spectrum, it's Phoenix.
Yeah.
Thank goodness for Phoenix.
Yeah. Yeah.
John Mayer. That is a contact since I've been here that Suzanne had already established, and well, that's the person.
Let me talk to the gentleman that I've been dealing with Phoenix. See who he can recommend, Spectrum.
Okay.
Going to name and number.
Okay. We can go, Jerry.
So moved.
Bye. Oh, my gosh, this feels like.
That's a record.